Harvey. Interesting characters.
He's, I guess, he's in charge of dissolving our Catholics practice. So he called me with something the town had with the Knights that I gotta take care of.
Go ahead.
All right, I'm ready.
Small town government.
Set to me. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
The light's not on.
Very good, thank you. Good evening, welcome to our regularly scheduled meeting of the Town Council for April 6, 2015. Tony Martino, if you can lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, Dolores.
Councilor Hemmings.
Here.
Councilor Hurley may be late. Councilor Kotkin.
Here.
Councilor Manusos.
Here.
Councilor Martino.
Here.
Councilor Rell.
Here.
Councilor Roberts will be joining us after her other meeting. Deputy Mayor Berry.
Here.
And Mayor Montanari.
Here, thank you Dolores. Our first of our businesses, any public comments on a hearing item? Hearing item is on a resolution endorsing and authorizing the town of Wethersfield to participate in an Office of Policy and Management Regional Performance Incentive Program grant for a regional computer forensics lab. Is anybody in the public here this evening to speak on behalf or against this hearing item? Anybody here for that hearing item this evening? Last call, anyone for that hearing item? Bob?
Good evening, Robert Young, 20, Copper Mill Road. I take it it's this JAG grant that you're talking about, isn't it?
No.
No, which, what is it called?
This is, go ahead, I'm sorry. Oh, no, go ahead Jeff, you can, you can jump in.
This is the Regional Performance Incentive Grant. It's the hearing item under A1 on the agenda.
And how many dollars is that he won?
It's $150,000, shared amongst the towns for a regional computer forensic lab.
Ah, okay, I've read about that. I would, all the, all the, all these grants you're after, Mayor, you should turn them down. The people of Connecticut can't afford all these grants that are going out. What you're doing is encouraging. The more spending, spending of money that we don't even have, which means we're living beyond our means. I would urge you seriously to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll move into open public comment on any topic of interest. Anyone wishing to speak this evening? Gus?
Good evening, Gus Colantonio, 16 Morrison Avenue. Guess what? Stop sign again. I wanna make something clear that basically I'm not requesting that you remove a stop sign on Hillcrest and Orchard. I'm just requesting that you install the stop sign on Morrison Avenue. Either before Tifton or before Orchard. Now I have to ask the question. Since Hillcrest Avenue has three stop signs and the intersection of Orchard and Hillcrest, and Morrison Avenue has two stop signs, and Morrison and Orchard. And I gotta ask, why? Is it because Hillcrest Avenue is 30 feet wide and Morrison Avenue is 24? Or is it because Hillcrest Avenue has half the amount of cars that Morrison Avenue has? Or is it because the, the, how do you call it? The frontage on Hillcrest Avenue is much more than the frontage required on Morrison Avenue? Or is it because, I guess, when in 1955 Morrison Avenue never connected to Silas Dean, the town decided to connect it and put more cars on Morrison Avenue? I've asked many times and I never got an answer. The only answer I got was basically says stop signs are used not to, not to control the speed. So, because I said people go too fast, they think that I'm requesting a stop sign. Okay, so, that's not the case. Now, I have to bring back again, I think it's, let me see, Charter Road from Route 3 to Townline Road, within Wethersfield that has two T-intersection with three stop signs. And before you approach stop sign, there is another sign saying, stop sign ahead. Why? Why so many stop signs? You can see it from one end of Route 3 all the way to Townra, to Townline Road. So why do you need all those stop signs? And why, in Rocky Hill, the first road, the intersection, has only one stop sign? So as long as I don't get an answer, I will be asking this every time. Thank you.
Thank you Gus. Others, who should speak this evening? Dave?
Good evening, David Kruk, 149 Broad Street. Last time I was here was March 2nd and Counselor Berry was in charge. And he did a very good job. And he thanked me, thank you. I spoke about the budget on the Board of Education. And I went online and I looked at the budget and there was just too much information. I, I really couldn't figure out what you approved, what you didn't approve of. So I'm gonna repeat myself. And thank you Paul for allowing speakers some liberty and extra time, as you have done in the past. But some of the things I said was, the, the Board of Ed wants to, to push this technology for math and, and math textbooks. And that's, from what I heard, it would be the first thing they would cut if, if you didn't fund them as they want. So, so here are some of the things I said at that meeting that Paul, you weren't there. I don't know if you watched the repeats or whatever. But my daughter is a high school student at Wethersfield High. She's a good student. And I have a son who's a lot younger, who will be in middle school very soon. Now, I, I will admit, my, my son, I sent him to corporate scrifty, so he's not in public school yet. But I, I plan to transfer over to public school. Now, a lot of people in Wethersfield, not a lot, but some people in Wethersfield, put their kids in private school. But if the public schools were just as good as the public schools, the private schools, they would send them to, to the private school, uh, public schools. Now, I believe that the public schools are just as good as the private schools. Now, if you, if you allow the public schools to get their needs, and that is the technology, and that was one of the issues at the last meeting, the technology and the textbooks. I, I think it was called Go Math, or I don't remember what it was called. But, but it was, it was highly touted by the teachers. And I was impressed with it. And I don't know if you guys were impressed with it also. Because one of the comments I made was that the, something the superintendent, a comment the superintendent made was that you have good schools, you have good people moving to your towns. And, and I commented that my sister-in-law is a teacher. And she moved to West Hartford because she thought the schools were a little better. I moved to Wethersfield because I thought the schools were very good. Now that, the school system has a great deal to do with who moves in your town. Unless you want people who don't care about schools. And I, I'm sure Wethersfield does not want that population coming here. Oh, we don't care about schools, let's, you know, let's move to Wethersfield, they, they, their schools stink. You know, you don't want people like that. So schools are, are sort of the priority in town. Now, I didn't see the budget. I don't know if you approved the Go Math or the technology they were asking for, the extra textbooks they were asking for. But I hope you did. I don't know, I guess today is the day you decide whether or not you're gonna pay for it. I, I hope you did. At the last Board of Ed meeting, they discussed, a lot of teachers talked about it. And I wish I were here today. Because this is the day that you decide, I, I think, I don't know. No, okay, not quite, okay, thanks. Thanks Ms. Hemmings, for clarifying it. Because I thought today was the, was the day. But I guess today's the day you're talking about it. So, so education is very important in Wethersfield. And I, I just hope you don't shortcut Wethersfield. And in my speech, as Mr. Berry, Counselor Berry could, well, remember, I compared Wethersfield to West Hartford and Glastonbury. Because my, my sister-in-law moved to, ultimately moved to West Hartford. Because she thought the schools were a little bit better. And I was thinking about moving to Glastonbury myself. They got, they got good schools. But I decided to move to Wethersfield because, not just because of the schools, because I thought the people here were, were good. I, I like good people. I thought the people here were not snobs. They were just good old fashioned, a lot of blue collar, some white collar, but just, just wholesome people. So that's why I moved to Wethersfield. And I, I hope you don't shortcut education. Because that, that will make a big difference in Wethersfield. Thanks.
Thanks David. Just to clarify, we're taking a presentation from the Town Manager on the Town Budget this evening. And we have a, several meetings before the budget will be addressed as far as formal voting until May. So you still have a little bit of time if you wanna weigh in. Thanks David. Any other comments this evening? Yes, I'll find. Oh, you come as a pair?
Yes, two for the price of one.
All right.
And actually, we're not coming to ask for anything. My name is Regina Vaughn, I live at 59 Whipple Way. I am a par educator for the Board of Ed. And we'd like to invite you to enjoy an initiative that our Secretary of Par Union has started. We are doing a Light It Up Blue Day for Autism Speaks on April 29th. Normally Autism Speaks Light It Up Blue Day is April 2nd, but since we were on vacation, and then there's S-Backs, and then there's Earth Day. So our Light It Up Blue has to be April 29th. And what we're doing is our union is sponsoring t-shirts that we will all wear on April 29th. So we just wanna let the town know to work with us and help support us. And maybe your children or you yourselves will all buy a t-shirt. And we'll all wear them on April 29th together and try to help our students and fight this autism that just seems to be taking over everything. The best thing about Wethersfield are the children that we work with. And we just wanna show our support, and we hope that you will too.
When do the shirts go on sale?
They're on sale now. They're on sale now, we can get you.
You can get them where?
Yeah. All the schools. They're being sold in every single school. Every school, teachers, staff, faculty. And it's on the Board of Ed Facebook page. Family and friends. You know. $15 a t-shirt. And we hope that you wear them on April 29th.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Appreciate that. Public comments, any other public comments this evening? Bob?
Ah, good evening, Robert Young, 20, Copper Mill Road. I'd like to, you know, I noticed an article regarding the state feeling urban outflow. And I hope all you folks have read this. I mean, this is a 20,000 head count that has left the state in a very short time. But that's also, doesn't include the students that are leaving. This is, this is, this appears that the students are, I don't think they're, they're being counted as well, but I know that there's a lot of them that are leaving as well. And I would think that this would be an opening. You know, I've talked about the people that were leaving in the past. And, and as they leave, those who are left have to pay your big tax increases. And I would, I would hope that this would finally sink in, Mayor. That you are really losing people. And, and I, I don't know what are, what are the reasons you could come up with? The weather? High taxes? I don't know what. But from what I've seen, the high tax issue is, is extremely difficult in this state. And Wethersfield has been battling the high tax issue, but been very, less aggressive to keep it down. And I would hope that this year you would really keep it down because we, you know, I don't think the citizens can keep up with this. We see a lot of empty houses. We haven't seen the prices going up much. We haven't seen much in sales in this town, in this year. We've, we've seen a lot of foreclosures, you know, since July through September of 2014. They had 16 foreclosures in the Wethers, in Wethersfield. That's just a short time span. And you know, that's, that's so unfortunate for those people that end up losing. But the rest of us lose too. Because the value's gone down in the town, in that area where that house was, or houses are. And it hurts all of us, and we haven't seen it come back. I've seen houses sit on the market and, and going nowhere. The only one that's going anywhere is the state of Connecticut. And they just keep borrowing another half billion dollars. University of Connecticut, 300 billion dollars, million dollars, 300 million dollars. That's 800 million dollars in a short period of time. But that's to fund all of these factories and offices and places that the great Governor has been funding with our money. With our borrowed money, that is. And then, of course, we have the town of Wethersfield that ends up repairing skate parks and, and, and helping out this devil in senior citizen apartments with, however, with grants. And where do those grants come from? They don't come from out of the sky somewhere. Someone has to work to make up that money. Someone has to go and borrow the money. So you can then take care of these people. And, you know, what do the rest of us do? We, we can't live like this. I mean, I mean, you, it just goes on, Mayor. And, and the living is expensive here. Now, I also noticed in the, where, where is it? In your agenda tonight, you have a introduction to a resolution regarding the opposition to the Senate Bill Number 1. I've been reading about that in the paper. I think they spoke about that last year up at the Capitol. How they wanted to sort of kick in a new plan. And, you know, this, this Senate Bill 1 doesn't work for Wethersfield. I, I believe you've even made a comment on, on that. And I support the people that are writing this and putting this out. And it's too bad, and I wish you, Mayor, would, would get out, get in line and, and support this at the state Capitol. You know, we've seen so much bad that comes out of that state legislature. And while all this bad stuff is coming out up there, nobody here talks about it. There's no public comment from our council members, from our elected officials about all this bad stuff that goes on up there. All this reckless spending that they do. Nobody talks about it. I gotta say this, this is a start, and I think you should all get behind it. Because heaven forbid those knuckleheads up there go with it. We're in trouble. You know that. Your, your revenue is gonna drop. It's gonna go to Hartford, Bridgeport, and, and New London and Waterbury, and some other places in between. And we're gonna get less than what we're getting right now. So we have to stand up to those people up there. It shouldn't be, I'm one of them politically, and the other guy says I'm one of them politically, and I gotta stand with them. Hogwash. You gotta put your foot down for the right reasons, and this is the right reason. We see all these grants going out that you're applying for on a regular basis. Where does the money come from? Nobody cares. But some fine day, the bankers who are bankrolling the state of Connecticut are gonna say no. And when that day comes, it's gonna be a difficult time here. I'd like to go on, I probably exhausted my five minutes, but I'll be back. Thank you very much, Mayor. And I hope you would really consider joining this, because I think we, someone needs to send a message, and it has to be public officials. Citizens, we can call up all we want. They couldn't care less about us, but they would listen to public officials. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other public comments? Lee?
Lee Seekers, 117 Wells Road. I wanna say hallelujah, the winter's over. The snow was awful this year, but it could've been worse. I gotta give our town some credit. We also gotta give them a little more kicking of butt to be more prepared next year. It's always easy to say that afterward. Somebody once told me it's always easier to ask for forgiveness and permission. But I wanna tell everybody that upcoming, in like 11 days from now, on the 17th of April, we're having the annual spring dance of the owner Buck Wolf Nature Center. It's gonna be a fun time. Our ticket sales are still plenty tickets. There'll be food, live band, silent auction, and a lot of fun for good cause. And Mark, that did on your calendar. If every group helps every other group in town, you know, united we stand, divided we fall, our town will be stronger. So if we could help each other out, then we'll just all be stronger. Because really, it's true. United we stand, divided we fall. So if we can all help one another, our town could be better. And why not be better than worst? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Other public comments this evening? Seeing none, we'll move into council reports. Council reports this evening? Tony?
I have two. The Senior Citizens Advisory Commission's met since our last meeting. And they had a resident show up looking for services to take a group of seniors to local museums at a regular price. This came up before when we had the Wethersfield Advisory Commission meeting with people with disabilities, where Curtin was there this year going over their transportation needs. And there's a few groups that are looking for reasonably priced rides to take them to local museums so they could do stuff during the days. So it'll be looked at for possible consideration in Curtin's contract or some other way of doing it in the future. And like I also said, the Wethersfield Advisory Commission for People with Disabilities met. Their last meeting was held at the First Church Village with various seniors in town going over Curtin's contract and what they're doing good and, you know, what they'd like to see improve. So it was a well-run session, and both sides got a lot out of it.
Thank you, Tony. Jeff?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Couple things, attended a library committee meeting. They approved the budget that will be coming to us. One of the things we'll see in it is that they're looking to spend some money to, for a total upgrade of the library website, which the members of the committee and, and the director consider to be really woefully out of date. And they're gonna probably be reducing their budget, at least for next year, for acquisitions to, to pay for that. Also attended the insurance committee meeting. They're doing some work on the wording of the RFP for claims audit that we endorsed earlier this year. And also on health insurance, I, I believe the budget Jeff's gonna be showing us has something close to about 8.9% built in, in terms of an increase. There's, they're still looking at those numbers. Hopefully they'll come down a bit. But regardless, last several years, we benefited from essentially flat to lower health insurance costs. And the claims experience this year just is not as good as we had seen previous years. It's close to budget, a little above, but it's not running a million or 2 million under budget like we've seen the last few years. That's it.
Thank you, Jeff. Other council reports? Jerry?
Yes, the Youth Advisory Board met on March 26th. And as I've said before, this committee is really active this year. A lot of involvement from people that serve on it, and also volunteers in town. So it's pleasant, pleasant to go to the meetings, and a lot of energy in the room. Two things, there's, on May, oh, three things. On May 7th, they'll be having the Youth Volunteer Recognition Night at the Community Center. Also, on Monday, April 20th, at 7:00 PM at Pittkin Community Center, there's a program on Internet Safety. It's a free workshop for parents only, featuring Scott Driscoll of Internet Safety Concepts. That's the same night as our budget hearing, but I'm sure that there are many parents that, one parent can come here and the other one can go to Internet Safety. But it looks like a great program. And then the most important thing is they're offering a $1,000 scholarship this year, which will be awarded at Youth Recognition Night. The deadline to apply is April 20th. And students who are interested in applying can get the application at the library, the guy, the high school guidance office, or the nature center.
That's it. Thank you, Jerry. Council comments? Council comments? Mike Rell?
Just real quick, I don't know if, you know, Jeff or you Paul have the answer to this, but the, the black bear that keeps coming into the town. DEP recently relocated it. Do we know if it's the same bear that was here last year? I mean, does it have a tag or anything? Jerry's not here.
It was on my street, so I spent a lot of time with the bear the other night. He was actually at my birder feeder waving at my husband, freaked my husband out completely. It's bear number 104, so he's tagged.
Same one as last year?
Yeah, in case you see him around.
Okay. And they, the state did relocate it?
Yes, he left in the back of a pickup around midnight, so he was.
Hopefully he won't be back.
Right, right. Being relocated for, I think they had relocated him once before, but.
Right.
Not far enough away.
Not far enough. Okay, thank you.
Other comments? Tony? They need your mic down just a little bit, Tony, they can't quite hear you.
Okay. The, we had a tour of Hemmings School. Some of the parents had some concerns of the playground over there. So some of the councilors showed up that night for that tour. At the same time, Mr. Bushy took us around and showed us some roof leaks that occurred as a result of the ice up on the roof backing things up. So we're well informed on that, and we'll see what we can do to take care of at least the playground area. Mr. Bushy thinks things are under control with replacing some drains at the school there. And then I just wanna commend the Fire Department on their wine and cheese. They put on a very nice affair a week or so ago. They should be commended for that.
Thank you, Tony. Okay. Jeff, you have the floor.
Yep, take your time, so. Yep, take your time.
It'll go away in a minute here. There we go. Okay. This is a brief presentation, will be more in-depth presentation at the form of a public hearing on April 20th in this room, 7:00 PM. That'll be the second town council meeting of the month, and by charter, we hold the public hearing on the budget on that day every year. So, just briefly, this budget includes the Board of Ed, so this is the full town budget, including Board of Ed and roads and capital improvements. So if you, you heard last time about the education budget up here on the left, they went up 1.86 million dollars, 3.31%. The town, not including roads, went up 1.95 million. Over a million of that is debt service on the high school. So a big piece of the town side increase is the debt service to pay for the high school bonds we issued earlier this year, and then a small increase in the road levy, just to round it off to 1.5 million. Total increase, 3.7 million, which equates to a 4.07% increase. Now, as Council Kotkin talked about health insurance, we have changes in health insurance. So the budget, as it's presented this evening, has an 8.9% increase for health insurance. That number is now closer to 7.8, so we'll make adjustments as we go forward towards adoption prior to May 15th. If you look at the history of the mill levy, you can see how it has ranged over the, since 2005. What makes this one interesting, this graph interesting, you can usually see where there's revow, and the revaluation results in a much higher set of values because of slow growth in values during the five years between revows. But as you notice, we had revow last year, and we didn't quite get that increase in value. We held close to full value, but we didn't get the increases we had in prior revaluations. So that's a little different than what we've seen in the past. Just some points of interest in the budget. Debt service on the high school adds 1.93 million dollars. That's on 22 million dollars that we issued. We intend to issue approximately 21 to 22 million dollars more before the project is over, and one to two more issues over the next year or so. Health insurance is increasing at 8.9%. Again, that number will come down. To accommodate the new 911 system the state's rolling out, there'll be three new dispatchers. That'll give us two dispatchers on at all times. We're converting a records clerk position to a dispatcher and adding two. The MDC tax levy is increasing by 5.7%, or 157,000 dollars. Contractual salary changes depending upon the union, 2.5% adjustments for part-time and non-union, minimum wage adjustments, that hits the parks department pretty heavy because of our program staff. We do have a reduction in solid waste expenses by about 200,000 dollars due to our new collection contract, and we're adding a new physical service maintenance worker that's funded for half a year, and then next year we'll annualize that. But we're realizing with the field maintenance, snow removal, those kind of things, and the high school, the way the high school's laid out, there'll be significantly more things to clear snow from and maintain. We needed the extra body. Spending increases over time, you can see the chart at the top. Kind of explains itself over those years. 2008, the world came to an end, and that really changed a lot of the way we look at things. And then the bottom chart talks, looks at the split between education expenses and non-education expenses. It's an interesting graph, but you can see, of course, as in most towns, education takes up the lion's share of the town budget. So... What's next? Nope. There we go. Did I miss two pages? Nope, missed one. Okay. Municipal aid, there's been a lot of discussion about municipal aid. This is kind of the big pot we get. Of course, the big number is always ECS grants. That's what goes to the schools direct. That number's unchanged. Some of these went up, like the pilot went up a little bit fractionally, Pequon went up a little bit, Town Aid Road and LoSIP stayed the same. What doesn't show here, there's three particular grants that impact our social services department that we're not planning or not contained within the governor's budget, so we haven't included those as revenues. They are the Youth Bureau Service Grant or Youth Service Bureau Grant, and that's about 22,000 dollars that pays for the youth services coordinator's salary or portion thereof. The Capital Area Substance Abuse Council Grant or the KASAC Grant, that's about 4,200 dollars. Again, that was removed from the governor's budget. And then the Social Services Block Grant that helps pay the salary or elderly services coordinator. Again, that wasn't included in the governor's budget, but we are funding those programs fully in this budget and replacing the revenue. Fund balance, we learned during the lead-up to the sale of the 22 million dollars worth of bonds at rating agencies are more than any time past interested in your, your fund balance. How much is in your day fund? How much do you have on hand in case you have a bad day or a bad year? We're trying to maintain a high level of fund balance. So you can see as this budget's presented this evening, the fund balance is 10.5? 6? 6. Our policy calls for 7 to 10, but in the message, and Jeff and I have talked about this, Council Kotkin and I have talked about this, raising that up, 8 to 11, 8 to 12, that way we can, if we do have more fund balance, we're still within policy. The current budget or proposed budget you see is using, again, 300,000 dollars worth of fund balance. It's sustainable that way, and we kind of use that to offset against revenues in case we don't get all the revenues. We offset that with the fund balance. That way, we can fund the total budget. Capital improvements, drainage, fire safety improvements. This includes three new hydrants along the Silvestine Highway. The big, the big one here is schools, we're putting in, this includes the Emerson Williams gym floor. So that was a big topic for a lot of the community over the past couple of months. So that's the capital budget, 905,000. It's about what we spent in the current year, funded by the general fund, and then 90,000 from the CNEF trust. As of today, for the current year, we've accumulated 65,000 dollars in interest. Towards the 90, we anticipate for the year, so we're in pretty good shape with that revenue stream. And a detailed list of all the different improvements are in the, in the budget. CNEF, which is rolling stock machinery, non-capital, heavy-duty expenditures, again, police car replacements, software for the tax collector, that's the last year of that expense, dump truck, a backhoe, gang mowers, machine balancers, pagers, the typical stuff we burn through on whether, you know, this backhoe, how old's a backhoe? 1980-something? Some ancient thing, right? Yeah. So that's the rolling stock, and again, that's all contained within the, in the budget. Leases on the equipment, we've been good at the end of each year with money left over. Instead of leasing, we just use the cash left over to buy some of those things. One of the big items is Wi-Fi at Town Hall, and that's generic. It's Wi-Fi at most of the town buildings we're rolling out. We get a high demand for public Wi-Fi at our buildings and also for our staff to use their devices during meetings, not to play on the internet, but to connect to the, to the network. So... But that's where we are with that. Budget process, public hearing is April 20th, 2015, 7:00 PM, Town Council Chamber. The full budget, that book some of you picked up, and there's a box of them over here, is online at weatherfieldct.com. You can get the whole, as much as you want to know, as much as you ever wanted to know is in that book. Comments, phone, 2801. Jeff Bridges at weatherfieldct.com. You can mail them in, whichever, whichever way you want to go. And the budget by charter must be adopted by the town council by May 15th, 2015. And as you heard a little bit this evening, there'll be, there'll be public, or excuse me, budget meetings, at least three are scheduled so far for the council to review the budgets and make spending recommendations, and at some point, adopt the budget by May 15th. So that's the briefly budget presentation, or brief budget presentation. The council has any questions, at least right now? You have to take them. I can walk in, speak instantly. Go ahead.
And I know we briefly talked about this, but the Emerson Gym, that's, that's in the budget. We obviously want to get that done. There was one part that had a leak. Now, that's not in there. Can you just explain why again? Because we want to make sure that's done before...
Right, the leak's been fixed, right? Fred, where's Fred? That leak's been fixed at Emerson?
Leak has been fixed and addressed for windows now, obviously because the weather has, has changed.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anybody else? Everybody's overwhelmed? Is there a motion? No. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. Obviously, we have several meetings scheduled, a full day on a Saturday, a couple, the public hearing on the 20th, but, so I'm sure we'll do a fair amount of work with it, but I wanted to thank Jeff, our town manager, and his staff for the assembly of the budget that's been delivered to us for our initial digestion, I guess, and just, once again, Jeff, your budget documentation and work and all the behind-the-scenes work that our department has is just outstanding, so deeply appreciate that work. I know it's a lot, a lot of hours, so thank you.
It was, it was a good process. We, our new finance director, Mike O'Neil, had an opportunity to start from scratch this year, and that was a tremendous help. He's got a very fresh look on, on these kind of things, and his staff did a great job.
Thanks, Jeff.
Town clerk, anything? Lars?
No.
No, no communications? Okay, good. So we'll move into council action. I think, Donna, you have an appointment and a resignation. We'll start with the resignation.
I do. I have a resignation from the Central Connecticut Health District, Paul T. Clunin of 668 Ridge Road, effective April 6, 2015.
Have a second? Second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstentions? And then an appointment, Donna?
I have an appointment to Inland Wetlands as an alternate, Lou E. Michaels, 303 Garden Street, 46, 2015 to 630, 2016. It's filling a vacancy.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstentions? Thank you. We're gonna move to B2, unfinished business, the acceptance of a bid for the reconstruction of Fair Lane Drive.
Motion to approve the bid from General Paving for 433,735 dollars for the reconstruction of Fair Lane Drive?
Second.
Motion and a second. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll ask Mike Turner to go over this item tabled from the last meeting, and I believe the full bid tab was in your packet this evening.
Yes, I, good evening, councilors. I believe part of the information that was provided at your last meeting was cut off, and you did not have the full bid tabulation from all of the vendors that had bid on this particular project. Again, General Paving is the low bidder. Obviously, he has, you know, worked with us in the past very successfully, and we make the recommendation to award to General.
Questions for Mike on this? Donna?
When I read through this, Mike, I got the impression that, and let me just back up. I know when we do these kind of projects, so the total week construction, that we take the money that we get from LoSIP and kind of bank it so that we can afford to do some of these type of projects, because they obviously cost more than just a milling and overlay. And this was delayed because we didn't have enough. Is that, I got the impression that we had received less money, so, from the LoSIP grant. So if you could help me understand?
Okay, yeah. We receive the, the LoSIP is a, is a grant applicant or a grant award essentially that we get each year around March, okay? And basically, the way LoSIP works is you have to, it's, it's basically money that is set aside, if you will, in a checkbook, and you have to apply on a very specific project to draw it down. So you're right, at the la, you know, when we opened the bids, we were early in terms of having the money availability. So we didn't get any less than dispatch here.
Okay. Because when I read it, I got the impression that we got less, and it just gave me pause because here we go.
No, I think what happened was we were finishing up the Jordan Lane project, which was the last LoSIP project that we had. We still had leftover funding that had to go to pay those final bills on that, and with the remainder, we did not have enough to make the award last March.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Mike, if we approve it tonight, when would we expect the work to start, and when do we expect it to end?
He's looking at a July start, and it will be done before winter.
Before winter?
Yes.
Okay, so the road would be...
Yes.
...torn up for, you know...
Good, good part of this.
Okay, all right.
Other questions? Okay. We have a motion and a second in front of us for approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay, moving to B3, other business, approval of a resolution authorizing the submission.
Motion to adopt a resolution supporting the regional performance incentive grant for a regional computer forensic lab?
Second.
Motion and a second. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. CROG is soliciting RPI grants, regional performance incentives grants, for different projects. One of them is this regional labor, computer laboratory that has done some good work already on bullying and computer crimes and so forth, so they're looking to get this grant to enhance their capabilities, and it's supported by our police department.
Questions about this? Okay, pretty straightforward. Seeing none. We have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstentions? Thank you. Motion passes. Free B.
Motion to approve the JAG Violence Prevention Grant for 22,000 dollars.
Second.
Motion and a second in front of us. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is a grant request from the police department to add some additional security on the buildings and some of the surrounds at the police department, basically to keep out burglars. It's all hardware, there's no match, and it's not, there's no personnel, it's just hardware.
Thank you. Questions for Jeff on this? Again, pretty straightforward. Mike Rowe?
Just a question. I'm reading impact if it's not approved. They currently rely on the current system. Has there been any problems with the current system at all? Break-ins or anything like that?
No, it's just not very sophisticated, or there's not a lot of camera surveillance out back in the sheds that we house, the new radio equipment and some of the other equipment out back are not protected.
Okay. All right. Thank you. This is Mike. Motion and a second in front of us. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you. And 3C.
Motion to authorize the town manager to apply for and accept a state grant for the police and youth program for an amount up to 10,000 dollars.
Second.
Motion and a second in front of us. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'd ask Kathy Bagley to, to lead you through this one.
Good evening, Kath.
Good evening. This grant is, we've, we're gonna be applying for it through our, well, kind of in collaboration with the police department. That's probably the key thing, and it's geared to have police officers that are on patrol interact with students pretty much from middle school to high school age. And this grant will be for the school year coming up in 15, 16. And our goal is to get the interaction started so that the police officers can interact with the students in a variety of adventure activities, where they would go out, actually plan the activities, work on that piece of it, develop leadership skills, planning skills, and working with the officers, go out... in a variety of adventure activities, where they would go out, actually plan the activities, work on that piece of it, develop leadership skills, planning skills, and working with the officers, go out and actually go on the adventure. So that's the premise behind the grant.
Questions for Kathy on this? Seeing none. Thank you, Kath. We have a motion and a second in front of us for application for grant. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstentions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kath. Finally, three D.
Motion to accept the proposed memorandum of agreement between the town of Weathersfield, the Weathersfield Board of Education, and CSCE slash SEIU Local twenty oh one, CTW Custodian and Maintenance Union?
Second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Jeff? Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. A couple of years ago, we were in negotiations with the custodian union for pension changes that we had, as we had negotiated with the other bargaining units. Their contract, the custodians' contract with the Board of Ed, does not include any reference to pension whatsoever. So any amendment to the pension program for the custodians has to be done by the town council in the pension document itself. We took an action that evening. There has been, there was a challenge to that action by the custodians. However, over the last year or so, we've negotiated the change, as we had, would have at that time, and they've accepted the same program that the other bargaining units have accepted, where they pay a higher portions into the pension, they give it up for new members, their, their new members go into a 401K type package. So this agreement basically memorializes what we requested two years ago. Any paybacks in terms of contributions into the 401K to the union members were made by the Board of Ed, and they were on board with that. So this basically brings us back to where we were two years ago with the rest of the bargaining units. And the board, and the custodians have signed off on it. Thank you. And of course, you support it, Jeff? Absolutely. Thank you. Questions about this for Jeff? Jeff?
Jeff, when, assuming we approve this tonight, will there be any employee bargaining unit other than the police that are still, where new members still receive a pension once we approve, once we approve this? Or is, are there other groups that I'm not thinking of?
No, there'll be no group other than the police that are still, where newly hired employees enter into the defined benefit plan. And even the custodians since two thousand twelve have not participated.
Okay.
New hire custodians.
But this sort of memorializes that, in a sense, or?
It resolves all the outstanding issues that we weren't able to negotiate at the time.
Okay. Thank you. Good job.
Thank you. Great job. Mike?
How much, I mean, how much does the Board of Ed have to go back and pay?
Uh, there'll be two people, four and a half percent times two years, or times now, from now to October first, two thousand twelve. There were three, but one of them moved up to a different position, and so. When, with the other groups, the arrangement was, there's four and a half from the employee, four and a half from the employer. The way the custodians, at, at the time, since they didn't negotiate, it was four and a half from the custodians into the 401K, no employer match at that time. So basically, we're going to back up and do the employer match as we has, as we, as we have done with the other groups, or the Board of Ed will. Questions? Other questions? I just worked Jeff on that. We have a motion and a second in front of us for this approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstentions? Thank you. Bids for A.
Motion to accept a bid from EZ Dock Northeast, also known as FWM Inc., as the lowest bidder, meeting the specifications for four hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred dollars.
Second. I think we have a motion and a second. I assume Kathy is going to come up on this one.
This is the start of our dock project down at Weathersfield Cove. We've been working on the project for a number of years, and gotten all the state permits, Army Corps of Engineer permits, all the town boards and commissions. And, and we also received a federal grant to pay for part of this install, for part of the work, both the materials and the installation. So we went out to bid and received three bidders, and working with our engineering firm, the bids were reviewed, and they made a recommendation based on the company that met the qualifications and the specifications, and had the lowest bid in that regard. So that was the process we went through to be here this evening to submit the bid for your award tonight.
Thank you, Kath. Questions for Kathy on this? Jeff?
Kathy, could you give us, and those who use the Cove, some sort of idea of schedule?
The, the bid from EZ Dock identified that it would be approximately twenty-one days, so I would say three to four weeks to have the work done. The, the beginning part would be the, actually getting the docks built off-site, and then brought to the site, installed on the site, and then they're actually installed with helical anchors to the ground in the water. And so first you position the docks in, and then you actually anchor them in. So, and then you get all the docks in, and then also part of this project is putting some navigation aids up in the cove, and some additional moorings. So that will be the process that they'll go through.
And what, roughly, when?
The timeframe will be based on, they're going to, they have to watch the water a little bit for the height of the water to determine when's the best time that they can do it, when the water's a little bit lower, and when's the best time we think it should go in, based, again, on water conditions and the minimal impact we want to have to the boating season. So it's a, it's a mix of both.
Okay.
But definitely this season.
This season.
This season, definitely.
Okay. Okay. And I was, you had a good sort of spreadsheet on the money. And it looks like the total cost of the project, as I look at it, is, if you include this, the construction, but also the design and all the other pieces, it looks like seven hundred thousand, more or less?
Yes, that is correct.
And it looks like we got almost a half a million in federal grants, and then it looks like we're going to be not spending as much in the town money as we had thought. So, I guess, between you and Jeff, does that, does that money then go back into our capital improvement fund, potentially for other projects? As I look at this, just based on the spreadsheet, it looks like we've approved two hundred and seventy-five thousand, and you expect to use about two hundred and thirty-two thousand.
I, I think the way the grant works is, there's a, there's a hard split, seventy-five, twenty-five. So, we'll mix that, but there's also, what's not shown here is the twenty-five the CIAC put into next year's budget. It's kind of, we didn't know the bids weren't out yet. So that's available to reallocate, and then when we're done, of course, whatever's not spent, we can reallocate as well. And the council, you know, will look at the split between the Cove Preservation Fund and what the town put into, in terms of expense split.
Okay. Alright. I would just ask, when we do go through, maybe on the twenty-fifth, when we go through the budget, maybe if you could have some idea, now that you have this bid, and what the impact would be on either money that's been previously allocated for capital, or on what the Capital Improvements Group recommended? You know, just to see if there's other projects we may, we may want to do that got knocked off, or what we want to do as we go through the budget.
Right, we know the twenty-five that we can reallocate. And the CIAC gave us a priority list, in addition to the nine hundred and five thousand, on if money became available, this is what they recommend us funding in priority order.
And because of the federal-town split, the, the bid as it came in, we also had to send that out to the state for them to review it, because not only would there be a reduction on the town match, there'll probably be a percentage reduction on the federal match also. And we're looking at that now.
Thank you.
My question, basically, I had answers, because I was concerned about the twenty-five we had in this year's budget for the twenty-five. Because if we can reallocate it, we might be able to finish a project that we're only going to be able to start this coming year.
I'll take a look at that. Mike Hurley?
Could you just go over how, how the docks work, when it's high water, and then when the ice moves in and freezes over the cove? Because they're going to be in there all year.
Yep, they are, they are year-round. That was one of our key conditions. And the way it works is, the, the docks with the floats, in general, remain about an inch and a half above the water on a regular day. And they're anchored to the bottom with a, they call it an elastic road, that if you can think of a very strong elastic band, that expands and contracts based on the water level. And it's designed based on the conditions of the cove. So it's actually purchased and installed based on the water conditions we've had and have seen a history. So that will flow and go up and down as the, excuse me, as the water level goes up and down in the cove, and we know it goes up and down a lot. So that's the, the first piece of the design process. With the ice forming around it, because the, the docks float above the water, most of the docks will always be out of the water when the ice freezes. So they'll just have a small portion that'll be in the water, and they're designed to withstand ice freezing around them. They're not designed to withstand, if a, we're not on the river, but if a piece of, of ice came down the river, something like that, they, they don't, they're not designed for that, but they're designed to stay in place. And then each year, you, you have to look at general maintenance, just to look at the connection pieces that are, they're flexible rubber that has held up well. We've actually seen places in Canada where they've used them year-round, and they've held up very well. So that's kind of how it works. And one other thing is that, as part of this dock process, many of you are aware that when the water comes up, the, it's, it's not the beach, the, the road in front of the warehouse floods. We've also designed a piece called, we call it a movable float, that stays attached to the dock in normal times, but should we know that the water's coming in, we can float the other piece of the dock right onto the road so we can access the docks from the higher elevation. So it's all part of the dock design that we went through.
Thank you. Kathy, how much time did you spend taking the old ones in and out every year? I mean, that was a fair amount of staff time, wasn't it?
Yeah, it's probably a week to ten days, putting them in. If, if everything was okay, if they had to replace stuff, which happened all the time, that would extend the, putting them in. And then taking them out, you had to try and find the right time when the water was low, and you could get in there and pull them all out. And that was a lot of wear and tear on the docks also.
Yeah, so that's all eliminated with this, obviously.
Yes.
Thank you.
If for some reason we needed to take the docks out, can we do that, or are they permanent?
No, they're, they're, they're in pieces, they're modular. So you can disconnect, and if you had to take them out, or you knew, I know something was coming.
Flooded.
Yeah. Yeah, they could definitely be detached and pulled out. I'd have to figure, there'd be some work involved in that.
Okay.
Mike, did you, Mike Rowe?
Looking at the contracts, it doesn't look like they have a warranty written down, but does the company warranty these docks for a certain amount of time? Just in case, you know, those elastics break, or we do get a winter worse than we got this year?
There's an eight-year warranty with the dock system.
Thank you. Further questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Kath. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstentions? Thanks, Kath. Finally getting it done, right?
Yeah.
After all these years? Four B.
Motion to accept a bid from SK Mechanical for the replacement of the burners and the boilers at Hamer Elementary School for thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars.
Second. Motion and a second. Jeff? I'll ask Mr. Bushy to talk about this one.
Good evening, everybody.
Fred?
We had approximately seven bidders that came in. Lowest was SK Mechanical at thirty-three, nine. I won't go to the highest, but the, the next was thirty-nine, four fifty, and the last was forty thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars. We, we opened the bids on March nineteenth, and gave me a little time to vet these folks out. They seem to have everything in order and ready to go, so I'm, I'd like to recommend that, that we choose SK Mechanical to replace the boiler, burners at the Hamer School.
Questions for Fred? Tony?
Fred, once this work is done, do you know what kind of energy efficiencies we'd be getting out of this?
Well, they should burn at approximately eighty-nine percent. Right now, our burners are probably running about seventy to seventy-two.
Jeff, I'm sorry.
Fred, this is, this will be done during the summer?
Yes. Yes, there's a, a eight to twelve week lead time on the burners, because they're custom-made for the, for the boilers.
And I ca, I can't recall what your, what the expectation was for this project, but this, does this come a little below what we had?
Yes, there was, we earmarked through one percent funding. The, approximately forty-eight thousand, forty-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars, something to that effect.
Okay, and that's in the, is that the current, that's the current year's budget? So it's basically?
It's in capital.
It's in, yeah, for the current fiscal year?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstentions? Thank you, Fred.
Thank you.
Four C.
Motion to approve change order number one forty-three with Ferguson Electric for thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars.
Second. Motion and a second in front of us. Jeff? I'll ask Mike Turner to talk about this one.
Good evening. There's numerous lights and light fixture styles throughout the high school. The particular lights that are in, of discussion tonight are the lights that are installed in the gymnasium. And what we're doing is, we're looking at the entire lighting package as a whole. These particular lighting fixtures, the J, J one, H and H one, are the lights that, the LED lights that are illuminating the, the new gymnasium floor. What we're looking, or hoping, is that all of the other lights are, not everything has been released yet. So the architect is in the process of seeking out credits on other lights to achieve these particular lights in the, in the gymnasium. So this, this is an add onto the, onto the cost of the lights. He's seeking essentially an equal credit for other types and styles of lights within the gym that will come, I, I had hoped to be able to bring that to you at the same time, but they're not done with their negotiations. They're still in the process of getting samples and things like that, so.
So, just so we're clear on this, the lighting that was installed in the new gymnasium, obviously, has had some issues. I think there's some dark spots, there were some concerns. So, this particular bid is going to replace those lights, or add additional two?
There, well, there were, there were additional lights added to the gym, because it was, when the, when the designer designs the gym floor and the spacing of the lights, he depends on what's known as the photometrics, or, or the light spread calculation that, that's supplied by the lighting manufacturer, okay? And in that case there, he laid out where the light should go on the gym floor, and it still produced shadows. So, the lighting company actually provided two O and G additional lights to make up the difference at their cost.
And that's been done already?
That's been done already, okay?
When, when was that completed, Mike? Just out of curiosity?
That was probably about three weeks ago, three to four weeks ago.
Okay, so after the last game was played?
Yes.
Okay, subsequently?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think the board, I don't know, Fred's still here. I think the board is happy with the lighting levels at this, at this point in the gym. Yeah.
Much better.
All, all of the shadow issues had been taken care of.
So the cost for this is going to be borne by the electrical contractors? In the swap, assumedly, I'm saying?
No, Rusty, the architect, is looking at changing out the styles of other fixtures and eliminating, I think, thirty-five other fixtures that won't be needed throughout the building, in exchange for trying to get, these are very high-quality lights in the gymnasium. They're LED, they're energy efficient. You know, I don't, I don't think we're going to, you know, end up having to change a light bulb there for, you know, thirty years, one of those, one of those things, so. So this, this ends up being an add. There will be a subsequent deduct that will become before you, and our, our hope is that there's a, it's a net wash of the cost.
These were higher quality than?
Yeah, I ga, I gather from that, so. So, I mean, I mean, not to be cynical, but like- So, I mean, I mean, not to be cynical, but like, who missed this? I mean, obviously the lights were not adequate when they first were done.
No, they're adequate. I think you're, again, we're depending on computer-generated simulations of what the light spread is going to be.
Right.
And, you know, I imagine any small variation, whether it's a change in mounting height of a couple feet or whatever. You know, at first we thought it was interfering with things like, you know, baskets and things, and other fixtures that were hung from the, from the roof, but that was, that's not the case.
Mike, another, just, I'm still a little confused, I want to make sure I understand it. So the lights that are in the gym currently are going to be replaced by these?
No.
No?
No. We've got, the, these are, these are the lights that were specified by the architect and those were, that, and have been installed. There's an upgrade to the, it's, it's a convoluted thing, the way they specify what's known as a basis of design light and then they have to provide alternative manufacturers to allow the competitive bid process to work. So in this case here, we paid kind of the premium on this particular light and will, in exchange, get other numbers and quantities of other lights reduced to offset those costs.
Mike, my memory when Rusty was talking about that, this was one area that he did not think we should compromise, is that?
That is correct.
He felt strongly that those lights were the lights we should have?
That is correct.
And, and in that group of information is also that letter from Ferguson Electric. It's pretty disconcerting. Is the committee working on that? I mean, there's some really strong points that are addressed in that and it's very disturbing at this point in the project.
I think the whole, the whole, yeah, the whole submittal process was pretty frustrating on both, you know, both regards from both, you know, the architect expecting a certain quality and, you know, defending our position and wanting the best versus what had been specified and the contractors' attempt to use loopholes in the contract to try and get around those and furnish lesser quality fixtures, so. Without a doubt Rusty has been fighting for us, you know, to make sure that we get the best product we can. And as Deputy Mayor said, it's particular in areas that, you know, are of great visibility and, you know, I mean, you know, these gym lights are obviously, you know, an important fixture in the overall scheme of things and, you know. If we can compromise on other, let's say like an exterior light outside of a doorway, something like that, and we can accept, you know, different manufacturers there, then that's, that's what he's attempting to do. He's looking at the whole global package. I don't know how many different lights there, you know, there are, but there's quite a few.
Mike Rowe. Thanks, Mike. You might not have the answer to this and it might have to be a question to the building committee, but did Ferguson Electric come with any references or from previous jobs that they had done?
Ferguson is a big company and they were the low bidder and I think they were the only bidder on the electrical trades that was within our budget, if I recall. But the firm does have a history of seeking extras.
Did we know that beforehand?
Yes.
Yes. And that's why we've kept a, kind of a short string.
Tight reins on this, on this particular contractor. In terms of his work, his performance, his quality, I mean, he's, they're fantastic. They're, they're probably one of the vendors out at the high school that is well ahead of schedule.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mike, for that explanation. Appreciate it. I think we've answered your questions. We have a motion in second in front of us for this change. Are all in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Abstentions? Thank you, Mike. And finally, 4D.
Motion to authorize the town manager to apply for and accept a state-matching grant program for elderly and disabled demand response transportation, dial-a-ride expansion grant in the amount of thirty-one thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars for Weathersfield and eighty-nine thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars total and to sign a memorandum of understanding with the towns of Newington and Rocky Hill to provide a tri-town medical transportation service.
Second.
Thank you. Motion in second. Jeff?
May I, Mr. Mayor, counsel ask Kathy Badle to come up one more time.
This grant is the expansion of our dial-a-ride system. We've had this in place now for a number of years. It actually provides services to other area towns that our dial-a-ride does not do. So five days a week, we go to a variety of different towns for medical appointments only and that's what the expansion grant is through the state. They wanted to see it. It doesn't supplement existing budgetary dollars, but it provides additional service to both our elderly and disabled residents in town.
Questions for Kathy on this? Pretty straightforward.
Just one.
Go ahead.
I'm assuming that this is a well-used service within this, within these different locations because it really does get outside of the Hartford area.
It absolutely does because of that, because nowadays people's medical appointments are, we hit all the major towns in our area now that have medical offices.
And there's a good demand?
Very, yes. The, the demand, like for us, we, we're allocated a hundred and eighty-four rides a month for Weathersfield Service and we probably average about one seventy, one seventy-five. The nice thing is we haven't had to deny a ride at this point, which is something we work really hard on.
Thank you.
Seeing no further questions, motion in second in front of us for the authorization. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Abstentions? Thanks, Kathy. I think you're done for the evening.
I think so.
Great. We have a resolution which has been introduced and we will meet, move to regular meeting minutes approval of March sixteenth.
Motion to approve?
Second. Any changes, deletions?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking through the section and I think it's on pages five and six. This was about Fairlane, which we tabled.
Correct.
And I'm trying to figure out where it says that we tabled it in the minutes. It almost sounds like we approved it, that the vote, the eight-zero vote was to approve it, not to table it, unless I'm missing some words somewhere. Yeah, it looks like we missed a paragraph there.
Oh, okay. I'll definitely change that to the, move the table.
There must have been some discussion. I assume I wouldn't hear that there was a question about the missing page.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so we should include some backup as to why. That vote was obviously the table, so. Thank you. Other changes? Assuming that change, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Abstention here. Okay, public comment? Gus?
Good evening again. Gus Colantonio, sixteen Morrison Avenue. Few comments today. Four percent increase, I think, for the town budget. I think it's way too much. As I have stated before, for the past three or four years, the household income, the average household income for the people that work in private has not gone anyplace at all. If anything has gone down. While the household income for people that work for government has been going up. When is it going to stop? Okay, somebody has to represent the residents in town. We cannot afford to pay. For, for the past four years, it's an average of three percent. It's a lot of money. Parking recreation, I guess, you know, for maintenance is two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, for pavement maintenance is twenty-five thousand dollars. Wow. When was the last time any of you has, has driven on Bird Road between Silas Dean and it's just to the, I guess, you know, to the west of that? Their road there, there's more patches than pavement alone. It's ridiculous. If we really want to impress people when they come in, the road system should be improved by a lot. The extra you just approved, twenty-eight thousand dollars because of additional lighting. Something went wrong there. We did pay the consultant to give us a good design. They did something, it wasn't working right. Now the consultant is looking for to, to decrease the quality and, and quantity of other switches to accommodate or to get some money back? I think that's ridiculous. Somebody should be responsible for that. It's part of the design, we paid it, and yet it wasn't correct. I think it's bad. Going back to the stop sign, I wanted to say something because Hillcrest Avenue intersection side distance, as measured by the town, is three hundred and forty-four feet towards Silas Dean and nine hundred and seventy feet Walker Hill. On Morrison Avenue and Tifton Road, the side distance is only two hundred and thirty-two feet and they're telling me that we don't need a stop sign there? The police department has stated that an orchard looking east towards Silas Dean, we can only see two hundred and ninety feet and they have said that's why we need a stop sign. If you need a stop sign two hundred, for two hundred and ninety feet intersectional side distance, don't you think you need one for two hundred and thirty-two feet? Does anybody ask the town engineers, any of you there, to see if I'm right or they are right? What is the reason? Or they say, because you don't care, you're not accountable for, you cannot be sued for anything, God forbid something happens, what's going to happen? This is ridiculous. Something needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Gus. Other public comment? David?
Good evening, David Kirk, one forty-nine Pro Street. Thank you, Gus. He showed me the booklet that was in the box over there about your budget, your proposed budget. That's not going to be finalized today thanks to Donna Hedman, who informed me that today is just a discussion. I looked through it for everything I talked about earlier. I talked about things I talked about at the Board of Ed regarding the programs that they wanted. I talked about that they wanted the new technology, the new textbooks, and then I went, then I went in this two-hundred-page book and I looked for it, not in, not in here, not in here. I guess you can't put everything in here, but, but maybe it is in here.
It is.
I couldn't find it. I gotta, gotta put my glasses on, I guess. But I don't know if you approved it or if you didn't approve it, but I, I hope you did. But I looked and it, it's just a lot of information. It was, it was hard for me to go through it. And, and thanks for telling me that it was in there. I don't know if you approved it or not, but that, that's a lot of information to go through. In the, in the final budget, I, I don't know when it's going to be, it's going to be in March? It's already March. It's past March.
May fifteenth that they have to adopt.
May, May fifteenth, okay. Okay, well, I hope the Board of Ed gets some of this, what's in here. I gotta take a second look here, see what, what's in here. I don't, I don't know if this is what you're planning on approving or this is just proposed. It says proposed. I don't know, this is, there's, there's no, as far as you guys are concerned, there's no approval of any of this, right?
We haven't even discussed.
Correct.
Okay, okay, so this is just, just what's been put out there? Well, okay, well, I don't have too much to say about that then. You know, you know, I guess when, when it's approved, it's approved and when it's not, it's not. I, I hope you approve some of the things the Board of Ed requested because I think that it's, it's very important. Our schools are very important in Connecticut. As I said earlier, my son is still in private school and I'm hoping I'm transferring him to public school if public school offers what I hope they will offer. Thanks.
Thanks, David.
Good evening again. Robert Young, twenty Copper Mill Road. You folks tonight had a great time, I noticed, approving grants after grants. You know, too bad you people personally didn't have to pay for this and come up with this kind of money. But so many of these issues require applying for a grant, applying for a grant. Four hundred thousand whatever to, for the feds, get some money from them, from the state, get so many from them. We, we live so far beyond our means. And there's no stopping to it. We've seen this in our, in the renovation of a high school. We've overbuilt the high school. We've taken on more money than what we should have. And we continue raising taxes. Gus is right. Four point seven, point four, oh boy, four point oh seven percent increase for the town side and the board side. That's a heck of an increase. What do we see in inflation in these, in our days right now? We don't see much inflation, but we see a four point oh seven percent increase, which I think is horrendous considering the economy. We've gone through a bad so many years since the recession started in two thousand and eight and there's no end to this recession. Some might think so, but I don't believe so. I think there's more bad times coming and we're going to see that in the financial markets. But in the meantime, you folks just continue looking for grants. I don't know where that money comes from, but it's coming from the rest of us, obviously, in borrowed format, not in cash out the door. And really, it's going to be the children someday. They're going to be paying these bills. And, but nobody up here really cares. You know, we're working on paving. How, how good, how good is this general paving company that's now going to be putting on the Fair, Fairlane Road renovation? Tear it up and make it new. How good of a performer are they? But we keep spending. We don't give a who. I still see the creases going down the street. I see portions of the street where the creases should be, but there's not. And then I see other portions where they're opening right up and then we have to pay to go fix those. Why aren't those people who put the stuff down responsible for going back after a certain period of time to fix? But we end up paying. It's another twenty-five, another fifty thousand and it just continues on. And that's where it builds up to the type of four point oh percent increase that the town manager now is looking for the town side and the, and the board side. And then you go look at the board. Look at their, their financials. Has anybody really looked at those at the year-end? And you see all those incumbences that they have at the end of the year. They come out with the state, they close their books as of June thirtieth of whatever year it is and as they give the report, the first week of October, you see there's still a lot of money that they've incumbent, they haven't paid for yet. They haven't received it yet to make payment yet. That should go back to the old year. That should go back to the town council. Instead, you're allowing this to go on as they accrue and they only have a certain amount of time to identify before the June thirtieth and make that commitment and make that commitment, and they only have a short period of time to get that product and make payment. But it's obvious four months after, they still haven't gotten the product yet, they haven't made the payment yet, and you allow them to, to spend that money. They haven't, they have a lot of money left over at the end of the year, if you ran them right, but you don't run them right because you have to take care of them, and everybody else gets hammered. So, I really encourage you to really look at that budget on the board's side and, and make some, some drastic cuts. You haven't done it in a number of years. You give them all the time every year, you've been giving them what they want, yeah, I think even last year, you gave them more money than what they were asking for. And you're probably going to do that again this year, that's a shame. That's an insult to the, to the public who've come and voted for you, and of course, I don't vote for you. But I have no problem coming here and telling you. I'd rather vote for a dead person, I have a right in vote than, than you folks, because you just don't do it. You don't represent me, why would I vote for you, Jeff? You're sitting there laughing, why? I'd rather vote for a dead person. I get better results, because your results that you give me are very economically hurting, you really are, and I see this constantly. So anyway, Mayor, we'll talk in two weeks, hey, thank you very much.
Thank you, always a pleasure. Before we go into executive session, I take a motion, and just for the benefit of David's point, maybe for clarification for the public, so we could just share, there are a couple of dates on our calendar as a council with regard to the budget. The first is a full-day budget workshop on April twenty-fifth, Saturday, where various departments will be attending and presenting their individual budgets to us for evaluation. And then we also have on the following week, on the thirtieth, an evening budget workshop, which will do the same. So, and then we go into the following week where we have some tentative scheduled budget hearings as a council to complete our, our process and deliberation. To the point that Dave was making, obviously on the sixteenth, the board presented their budget to the full council. We will obviously deliberate that budget along with the budget process on those dates, as well as the contingency dates in May with the intent to pass a finalized budget on the fifteenth. Those budget workshops are posted and available, and then as you well know, on the twentieth of April, Monday night, is the public hearing where anybody from the public can come and speak on any aspect of the budget, not only the town side, but the, the Board of Education's side. And just to be clear, in the budget book that David referred to, that budget covers all of the individual detail for departments on the town side, but also references the budget submitted by the board, which is a separate booklet document that we've received. So, anybody from the public who is interested in weighing in on not only the town department budgets, but the Board of Education budget, which has been submitted to council for deliberation, can do so at the public hearing, can also attend any of the, the budget workshops, which will be posted. In addition to the passage evenings, which will be finalized in the first week of May with April, I'm sorry, May fifteenth being a deadline. So, I know you didn't get a chance to fully look it at, David, but just so you're clear, there is workshop setup which people can attend. And that, the process of evaluating the submitted budget from not only Jeff on the town side, but the board's submission to us for approval, will take place at that time. So, it's a, there are still quite a few steps yet before passage. Dolores?
I just have a correction, page eight at the bottom is where I have the information about tabling that, it's just out of place, so we need to re-shift it.
Okay, paginated, as they say?
Yeah.
Thanks, Dolores, appreciate that clarification. Can I take a motion to go into executive session?
So I'm going.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.